Welcome, everybody, to the study session September twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-two. Donna, will you do a roll call?
I will. Councilmember Bod.
Here.
Councilmember Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Present.
Marinasco.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember McDowell.
Present.
And Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
All right. Thank you, Donna. Tonight, we are discussing the two thousand and twenty-three budget. Finance Director Mike Fittins has information for us.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. We're pleased to bring you a first look at the budget. We'll enter into more detailed discussions next week, since it really, I guess, we're kicking off the budget season. So tonight is another chance to, for you to ask some questions and for us to share a little bit about the process that we've used so that you feel an understanding of what department heads and the city manager and all of us have undertaken to prepare the budget that'll be in a first hearing next Tuesday at the council meeting. So let's, let me talk first about our agenda. We're gonna, I'm just gonna review briefly where we're at with the calendar, the process we've undertaken with this budget, current revenue assumptions, the base budget expense assumptions, a brief look at FTE, which will have more detail in the full budget, and then we'll look at some of the capital investments that we're making. So to start with the, oops, oh, how could I mess this up so early? All right. So the budget calendar, I highlighted in blue where we're at. So we've gone through a lot of processes to get us to where we're at today. We have a work session tonight, and then it'll take us through the public hearings where our citizens, as well as you, will have a chance to look at the budget in more detail. We will undoubtedly have some changes between first hearing and second hearing, and then we're in line to have this adopted within RCW guidelines of where we need to be by the end of November. It has a little bit of time built in if we need to, but we feel like this is a a thorough calendar. Of course, I entered the process sort of, I don't even know if it was midway, it feels like at the beginning, but I think it was midway through. So finance staff and other city staff have been very involved in this to make sure that we are meeting the goals of the City of Shelton and also to continue to provide solid municipal services to our citizens. So let me move on to some of the process that we use in developing the budget and so that you have a little bit of that underlying knowledge of where we're coming at, in particular with some of the revenue and expense assumptions that are a part of this budget. I just want to start out with this kind of theme that I think you've heard before, that our expense increases and expense costs far outpace our revenue increases. Our, our available revenue increases are just not that much. And I, I think you've seen that through both in our last study session with the five-year forecast, what happens, but it just simply doesn't keep up with the demands on our city. We have budgeted one-time expenses as much as possible with one-time resources, and then ongoing expenses as much as we can with ongoing resources so that we're funding those ongoing municipal services and what we have kind of been accustomed to spending on with money that we can count on and revenue sources that we can count on. Personnel costs, as you know, are a large part of our budget. Retaining and attracting employees is costly, and we expect it to continue to be so, but we've budgeted with all of those costs in mind, and we'll look at that in a little bit more detail tonight. And certainly, as you have the full budget presented to you at next week's meeting, you'll see more of those costs broken down by departments and in the enterprise funds as well. The budget is built with no economic downturn in mind, and we talked about this a little bit at last, at the last study session. There's lots of press about this, but as you look at really where the predictions are, where the indicators are, it doesn't feel prudent at this time as we're presenting a budget to you and our citizens to budget for any kind of a downturn, because we just don't know where it would happen, when it would happen, across which of our revenue sources it might hit. I, I'd like to say if it will hit, I hope that's true. If, if, in fact, we do experience some sort of a downturn, we feel that the conservative revenue estimate we're at puts us in a position to be able to react in a way that is prudent and doesn't start to cut off resources or, or services before we even know what is going to happen in our economy as a whole, whether it be nationally or more local to our Washington State economy. But some things we can do so that you feel assured that we can react in a way that would be expedient. We can slow down spending during the fiscal year should an economic slowdown happen. And remember, I think we're, we're pretty well positioned in the City of Shelton. We know what our property tax assessed value is for the fiscal year ahead already. That will, would not be affected next year. The kinds of things that might be would be sales tax, but that's unlikely to be affected much early on. The indicators that we're using to measure this also, unemployment is at historic lows. We're not seeing anything really hit that in any way. So we feel it's prudent to watch this situation and react if we need to. Like I said, besides slowing down spending, we could even consider stopping or reducing some of the projects or initiatives that are a part of the budget, should we see that happen during the year. And we would, of course, address that with you, but it just doesn't feel at this time like we should be budgeting with that in mind. But the revenues are forecast at a very conservative level. So in this, the materials that you received tonight, the latest financial statement was included in there. A lot of the revenue assumptions are based on that and where we're seeing things at, at the most recent look that we can take. And it feels like we're, we're right in there with where things will be, and I hope stay for the entire fiscal year. We'll see. So that's the process. It's been, as you know, an involved one where I think when you're looking at all of the demands placed on a municipality, as you well know, with very, very modest revenue increases at our, that can just happen naturally at our disposal. To keep up with that takes a lot of hard work. And I think department heads, as you'll see, when you see the entire budget have worked really hard to include as many projects as we can with the limited resources that we have. So for some of the current revenue assumptions, and we covered this last time, our property tax, we're building this budget assuming the one percent increase. I put a dollar amount in here because sometimes when you hear that one percent increase, you think I, I don't know that people know what to think, but it's a very modest dollar amount, as you'll see. It's just over eighty-one thousand dollars. So that in and of itself is certainly helpful because any increase is, but it doesn't by any stretch cover all of our cost increases. We'll also have a factor for new construction. That's not entirely established yet. In a meeting I had with the Mason County Assessor, though, it looks like it'll be somewhat less than last year. And if you remember, in two thousand and twenty-one, there was some catch-up due to some appeals that happened really statewide during the shutdown of the pandemic initially in two thousand and twenty, so it kind of caught up to some things last year. So I think we're more leveled off this year to where it is, but there will be a factor for that. And then, of course, there's a little bit in our jurisdiction for state-assessed utilities, but not very much. We budgeted sales tax where the trend is headed through our financial statements to be what we feel like is in line with what we can expect. But you'll notice, as you see the budget in more detail next week, across our revenues, we're really not budgeting much increase at all. I will mention with our BNO tax, we budgeted a very slight increase. We have, I think it's safe to say, tell you, very, very old antiquated software. We've budgeted to replace that. We think that that will help us better not only analyze those collections, but stay on top of them and assist with those collections. So right now, we don't have a good mechanism to follow up or, or really help businesses with reminders and those sorts of things. And I think the new software will help with that. It's certainly not going to garner any sort of large increase. It'll simply help with the collection of those taxes and hopefully make it easier on everyone. But then through the rest of the revenue budget, you'll notice there's just really, we're just maintaining, we're not really forecasting much of an increase. When you see the revenue budget itself, it'll show a decrease, and that's because of those ARPA dollars that came in in two thousand and twenty-two, and unfortunately have to go out and aren't a part of the revenue picture for two thousand and twenty-three. So if those are out of there and you just look at it comparatively, there is a slight increase, but we can't show that on paper because those ARPA dollars go out. So that's where our revenue picture is. I mean, it's positive in that we, we're not showing a decrease. It's just unfortunate that we can't cover all of the increases that we have. And in order to function, as you all well know, to maintain the services and, and provide more, we just, we just don't have the sources increasing at the same rate. It's as I'm coming in new to the city and talking with other department directors, our facilities needs, as you know, are great. Across, I had a great tour with Public Works Director Jay Harris and his, some of his staff around the city at, you know, looking at our sewer infrastructure, where we need more water infrastructure so that we can get more houses, and all of those things are great needs. So you'll see that staff are doing a lot of great planning for a lot of great projects, though, with the limited increase in resources that we have. And if you have questions, I know you'll feel comfortable, but do interrupt me or, or stop me, and we'll address those or get more information as you need it. So on the expense side of things, as we were building that budget, and I'm talking about really across not just the general fund, but our enterprise funds as well, where our, some of our staff are, or many of our staff are paid out of. All of the budget that you'll have presented has the cost of living adjustments that are part of our negotiated agreements in there. Healthcare, we still don't have a final renewal at what rate that has increased. That's on all of our minds, at least in the finance department quite a bit, because we've budgeted for a seven percent healthcare increase. If that comes in less, of course, that'll help the budget out some, but we wanted to be in a position where we're budgeting for that at a place we think it will land. The other increases, well, the, the other benefits aren't as large a portion of that benefit package. We did have a employer side of the public employees retirement system increase going to affect September first, so we have that budgeted. And then it's as I mentioned a little bit earlier, it's the city's goal to maintain a competitive wage and benefit package to retain employees and attract them, and we've budgeted accordingly to be able to continue that. There's no increase to the general fund FTE level, the staffing level for two thousand and twenty-three. There's one point oh one position increase that shared between the enterprise funds for two thousand and twenty-three, and we'll talk about that a little bit more in detail next week. And we can certainly talk about it tonight if you want, but all other expenses across the funds are, are very modest increases. We had hoped to go a little bit higher to cover some of the inflation we're seeing and supplies and professional services, and we just couldn't do it across the board on all of our budget lines because we just don't have the revenue increases that we need in order to keep staffing funded at the level it's at and then go about doing that. So we tried to be somewhat directed at where we do that, but there'll undoubtedly be some cost increases that will just have to be borne by the baseline budget because we couldn't increase it in all areas. And just like each of us is experiencing, the city's no different. We're seeing higher costs and everything from fuel, which is leveled off a little bit, but to all of our other supplies are costing more, even our services are costing more because those are passed on to us. So that's how we built the, really the base expense budget that you'll see. It's well grounded in what I think is what we need to operate. But it's, I'm just gonna say, as bare bones as we can make it, because there's just not much space to include really any extra to expand it much beyond where we're at right now. I included in this the FTE, so you can just see that across the general fund, it doesn't grow. We have this broken down in the full budget, you'll see by department and with a bit more detail. We included some history so that you can see where, over the last four years, this has come. Certainly, there, there've been some increases to some departments, but there just wasn't the capacity to do that at all in the general fund. It takes everything just to maintain where we're at. The one increase across the enterprise funds is for a GIS, an asset analyst. And that's some software we're buying, but that's also been an area the city has really needed to undertake in managing its assets and making sure those are kept in a way that are able to be shown in audit, but also capitalized and on our books. And so that'll help us with that. It's obviously, it's not going to be able to be used everywhere because it's just right now being able to be afforded by the enterprise fund. So we have assets across other areas that we hope to add to this program eventually.
Excuse me. You told me we could interrupt you if needed.
Yes, of course.
Can you explain, I, I, if I'm not an accountant or anything, can you explain what like municipal or like city council seven point eight oh? What, what do those numbers mean?
So those are where we're budgeting largely your positions into so that we can account by a department for the cost for those. So we budget people we pay according to an FTE or full-time equivalency. So sometimes you'll see those partial across the general fund. It's largely because we don't have a partial person, but we have those that percentage of them sometimes is paid out of the enterprise funds. For city council, that is all of you.
All of you, and then the point eight is some of Donna's time and some of Carrie's time. Maybe so in my time.
Okay, I understand that. So those are our, are those are our numbers or position numbers?
They're position numbers.
Numbers, okay.
So while I suppose, you know, city council's a little bit different because you're not a full-time employee by any means, but for our purposes, we count you as a, if you, I guess, if you want to look at it as a position that we're attributing to the budget for the purposes of that. Across the other funds, you can certainly look at it as, I think, in some of the, maybe finance is kind of an easy one to look at because you have really more full-time positions, people working forty hours a week, if you will, and their full benefit and salary package.
So the seven eight, seven point eight oh, what does that come out to layman's? What is that?
So are you seeing, so for city council, it's seven point oh, right?
Yeah, seven point oh.
So that's your positions, all of you. That's just seven bodies that we're budgeting.
I got it.
For that.
I got it. I got it. Thank you.
But across the other funds, it really is, as City Manager Knight mentioned, it's some shared positions that are sometimes charged to some of those enterprise funds. So part of my time, because I spend it in doing things with the water fund, for instance, part of my time will be charged there. Very little, but.
Got it. Thanks.
So more than anything, I think what I wanted you to see on this is between two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one, the city reduced some positions in the general fund. We recovered a few for two thousand and twenty-two, and we're maintaining the same exact FTE going into two thousand and twenty-three. You'll see more of a breakdown in the full budget as far as what the specific positions are and kind of where they're, what their titles are through that. So I included some of the more significant capital investments that we've been able to budget as a part of this. I think that you'll see a lot of, I think it's important to mention that one of the things that, what was really standing out to me, and you all know this because you've been through the process, but when you're first in this, it's a real big aha moment is how much the general fund really has to pay for our street maintenance. And there's so much more we could do if only we had more dedicated revenue to that, because we all drive around our city and see that we need street maintenance and different projects, but it's a, it's a big drain on that general fund to do that. So we'll be talking with you about some of those projects. I think Public Works Director Jay Harris and his staff have identified some things that are, we can all say, oh, yeah, that's needed as you look at Olympic Highway North Pavement Project, the Wallace Neel, Neeland Pavement Project, but there's lots more as he was driving me around and pointing out all the cracks that need to be seen that we're not able to get to, just to preserve what our, our asset, if you will, and our investment. There's some solid projects on there, though, that I think you'll, our community will see happen this year. That'll be good. I've just highlighted a few. There's much more that you'll see in the larger budget that we present across the water and sewer funds that they'll be doing. I shouldn't say larger, because that sets it up as we have lots of things, lots of big money projects, but for what we're able to afford and pay for, I think you'll be impressed with what you see in there. One of the challenges for this budget, and I know City Manager Knight has briefed you on this quite a bit, are the jail costs, our community need for that. We, I think he's talked with you about the likelihood that we'll have a recommendation in this budget of using some of our available fund balance to fund jail costs. Chief Beeson and others are working on that contract with another agency to hopefully be able to have some more jail space. We're going to try to keep that as low as we can, that amount that we take from the reserve, because our plan would be to obviously pay that back, and that's going to be difficult over time. But I know you've been briefed on the need for that. I think our community will support it, but it's certainly going to come at a cost to to do that work. But we budgeted again. I want you to rest assured with all of these things we've talked about funded next year. It's gonna create a situation, though, as you saw in our five-year forecast, that we have to really start working probably earlier than anyone wants to on the two thousand and twenty-four budget so that we can start look at what our sources are, how we can really present to you what our needs are and how we continue to fund our complex municipality going forward. So that's where we're at with the budget for two thousand and twenty-three. Again, we'll make it available for that first hearing to you and to our public. We're just waiting on a review by legal counsel of the ordinance, and then we'll get that posted on the website just as soon as possible.
So you call these under the two thousand and twenty-three capital investment significant. These are projects that we are needing to do, but you call them assets?
Well, I mentioned, I think, maintaining some of our assets that we have, that we have an investment in our streets. In this building that we own, for instance, we're planning to perform some much-needed, and I, I don't know that it's ever been done, painting this building outside its original construction. So those sorts of investments in our assets, I think, are law, and there's many more on the, I can tell you, as we saw the list of things that are needed, we've, we've simply picked the things that we feel are the most pressing. I picked larger dollar amounts. There are many more that are happening. They're just, it's just, I wanted to give you a brief highlight of some of the things that we've worked really hard to make sure included in next year's budget. I included the street projects because those are, as I mentioned, largely funded through a transfer from the general fund.
Okay.
And just as, just as an example for this building, it hasn't been painted for twenty-two years. And you're starting to see some of the gaps in the siding, and if water intrusion gets into those, then it's gonna be a much more expensive repair than it would have otherwise been. On this request, this is really, I want to say half, but a little less than half, or excuse me, a little more than half, because also included was anti-graffiti protective coating for the brick. And we were not able to include that in this year's budget, but we did want to get the painting and the siding done. So we're trying to reduce the most bang for the buck that we can possibly produce and protecting from that water intrusion, especially in our environment is an incredibly important thing.
So you put a sealer on the brick?
We, that was requested. We couldn't approve it for this, this point.
And that protected from graffiti?
Graffiti and water intrusion. You get water into the pores to the mortar and everything else that protects, but by far, the painting of the siding and fixing those gaps was the more important piece.
Questions? Got a question on new construction? So if our, and I, and I might be getting in the weeds for no reason here, but so we read it as assessed valuation, but the county assessor's office talks about it being fair market valuation. And in new construction, I believe fair market valuation would be lower than the second year. So the first year would be whatever the sale price of the house would be. Is, is there any indication that because we, we know we have potential growth coming in future years, we expecting residential construction growth. So is it, is it based on fair, fair market value, or is it the assessed, there's just the assessed value, and is that, does that create? Because I guess it wouldn't be a realized increase for potentially a year right after construction.
So our aggregate.
Said new construction, sorry, a couple slides back, was something about new construction adding to that?
So we get a factor for new construction because it's not on the tax rolls. So as, let's say, an apartment complex is maybe thirty percent complete in July, when the assessor takes a kind of a snapshot of that value, it's not on our assessed value as a sold and processed property, so we get that factor. So I share it because sometimes people will say, well, your property tax actually increased maybe two point eight percent, yet you said you can only increase it one percent. And so that new construction adds to it because it's not on the books yet. So that's that additional factor. But the assessed value, where it's divided by a thousand times our levy rate, that is that value that the assessor's putting on it, that we're all mailed out and probably July or August, we should have all received it. That says, this is your valuation for your property that your two thousand and twenty-three taxes will be based on. And then that aggregate amount across our city limits is how that levy is created with the factor for new construction and then a small amount for the property where state-assessed utilities run across the city, which is not very much. It's mostly new construction.
I guess one final maybe comment is just, I think I said this in the last discussion around budget, but you're a big fan of supporting the general fund and projects that support revenue to the general fund as all at the same time, sort of. As all, at the same time, sort of the number two priority being making sure we're taking care of the assets that we've got an investment into from either state funds or others. So we built a lot, we're building a lot of new things. And, you know, Alder Street is gonna be, what, three, four years old here pretty quick? And, you know, stuff like that's gonna start breaking down and wearing out. And just making sure when we're putting this stuff together, we're the new construction, we're taking into account a small percentage of that for future maintenance and sustainment. So we're not twenty five years down the road and trying to emerge, find a, find cash to paint a building kind of thing. And I, that's from my perspective, sort of the two biggest priorities I think we should be focused on. So.
Yeah, the last three to four years, we built up that capital fund as part of the general fund up to about from nothing to about four hundred thousand. And we're using some of that to do the painting for this building, some for the electronic key locks and some as a set aside in the hopes that we get the grant for the library deck that we talked a little bit about. Not using all of it, but we want to be strategic about that. The other part is the employee for the asset management piece. Adding all of, all of our assets and meantime to failure rate for each of our assets and maintenance schedules for roads, for valves, for everything else into that GIS system, asset management system is gonna help us immensely down the road. Getting all that in and having somebody that knows how to do it right the first time is incredibly important of the future success of this organization.
Is it too early to talk about some of these capital investment projects that, that we're gonna be doing next year? We have budgeted next year, like the tree replacement project? I said to come on railroad, we clearly have some tree problems, but not all of them. I probably saw maybe four or five that were were the worst and the rest weren't that bad. I was in a city where they kind of opened up the area a little bit around the tree and that seems to help a little bit. I was talking to some people in, in Bellingham and maybe that's a project we might want to put on the back burner and help the general fund out. That was a three hundred thousand dollars.
Something like that, yeah.
For tree replacement. There are clearly some problems down there and maybe we can remove those few problem trees at this time and put the rest on the back burner. Because we're talking about pulling money out of our reserves. I don't know if tree replacement downtown is probably something that we want to look at.
We can certainly look into that and have some, some discussion points for your public hearing next week on that topic.
I've talked to people about the trees and they think, well, why can't we just remove the ones that are the worst? It's a good budget move, but.
Our problem is though is over time, we can't dictate where it's gonna pop the concrete out. Now we're gonna go from three hundred thousand dollar problem to eight hundred thousand dollar problem. So that's, that's the reason why you just keep pushing it off. When is the concrete ready? Is it gonna happen in one year, five years, ten years? Because once those roots start pushing them through stuff.
Well, yeah, I wasn't kind of saying that we don't need to do the project, but I'm not sure we need to do it next year with pulling money out of a reserve.
But we.
I'm not really advocating for it, but it's just how long do you let it go before it is?
Or before someone trips?
So we can, we can definitely have some options for you to consider on that particular project next week.
Yeah, the, the conversation around the reserve, I, I gotta remember four years ago when we changed that policy. And there was pretty, pretty dire fine looking to you because we're talking a lot about this together, but you know, we, we significantly increased the strategic reserve and for, for those moments of economic downturn. You know, I know we need to do, and I'm supportive of it still, but I, you know, I, I do need to recall those moments when we were, you know, looking at seven figure downturn and we said, hey, we need to plan for that for that day, you know, when that happens. And we've done a good job of holding of holding to that. I just want to make sure that we, we do pay that back and we make an effort to, to stay within our our means there and, and leave the reserve there for that purpose. But yeah, it's, that's a tough one. And then the risks with, with credit rating and potential bond capacity in the future, you know, some of that, you know, I want to just make sure if that's gonna be a win, it's gonna be solid, right? And we're gonna be able to demonstrate. You know, something from that.
Yeah, I think myself and our leadership team here have looked at, looked at the options, looked at the risks and the downside. And think at this point that it is a prudent investment to do. We're also very cognizant of the fact that we need to re-increase or reinvest in that strategic reserve to make sure that the desired fund balance is met at the end of the year. This is one of those investments that I think will pay big dividends to the community. But it is a one time investment. We cannot keep doing this year over year and everybody is fully aware of that.
So if we, we pull out a reserve and, and revenues come in stronger, can we just put that right back in the reserves?
Absolutely.
Just like automatically not think about next year, hey, we got an election month.
Well, yeah, there's that, but it's something that I would definitely talk to council about, about how you wanted to do that. Do you want to do it all at once? Is there something else? When you have resource allocation issues? I definitely want to get all of your input before we make any major decisions. And this is, certainly, this is just a recommendation of mine to the council. And we will listen to what you, what you have to say and the direction you give us and where we want to go. And that's the direction we'll go.
Well, I absolutely think, Pauline, if we're gonna pull money, it's, it's to hold people accountable. We have people in here that think that we just don't have we don't hold them accountable. We have no jail. We have, you know, they just go, ah, they're just gonna cite me and let me go. And then I'm gonna report and then they get cited again. And, and so I absolutely think that using that for that purpose, it is good. I just want to make sure that we're, we are paying it back, as Joe said, and if there's any extra revenues next year, which they could come in stronger. Just put it right back automatically.
One of the reasons we've talked about not budgeting for a downturn or recession is because one of the primary indicators for recession is job losses. And we are not seeing that anywhere in the country. Every place I go to is screaming for employees. And that is a major indicator of the recession. So if we start to see that, then we'll, we'll definitely have another conversation and Mike and I keep a pretty close eye on that.
I have a question for all the financial people, Mike and and well, Mike, but the rest of you, has it ever, has it ever happened in any cities where the citizen can invest in the city? Financially?
That'd be your property taxes.
Well, no.
You mean in a project?
Well, and like okay, so we have, we have a million dollars, let's say we have a million dollar shortage and we have all these projects. Is there any way of, of the citizens coming in and investing in those projects with a return? Has that ever happened?
Yes. There.
No, we did.
I, we have seen groups invest in certain city projects like the Lions Club with the Rascal Court that we talked about a little bit earlier this week. Acting, the city cannot loan credit at all.
Like if I had, like if I had five hundred thousand dollars and I didn't know what to do with it.
I, Jeff, Jeff Knight, do you want me to spell it for you?
Can I invest some of this money in the city?
Yeah.
For projects, they can use this money and then the investment, whatever you invested in. Then I get a return.
Yeah, it's a, I'm, I doubt that we would be able to do that, but we can certainly look.
Well, didn't they use to sell bonds?
You could donate. There's a donation form, but I don't know if we could give you a return.
That's not a return. Yeah.
Well, if they, did they sell bonds for the civic center or how did that work?
No, we can do that, but that's got to go to the municipal bond market. And that's what we did when we refunded the bonds two years ago now for the sewer plant. We refunded the bonds and then we're reissued new bonds with a shorter payment schedule and took about three million, if I remember, off the total debt. But that's an institutional investor. And citizens are certainly free to invest with that institutional investor who then pulls their money and goes and buys bonds.
Okay.
But I'm not sure if we're even equipped to handle something like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Right. Any more questions or comments? All right. Does the council have any new items for discussion? I'm sorry. Thank you, Mike and Chris, for your hard work on that. Now, does the council have any discussion? City manager have any discussion?
I do. Real quick, I know we don't usually have managers' reports at the end of study sessions, but I did want to mention tonight that this is our IT manager, Tim Adar's last meeting with the council. He retires on Friday and he's been positively giddy all day. He's been with us seven years and the time, the four years I spent with, with Tim has been terrific. He, once we started investing in technology, he was about as happy as I've ever seen an IT guy. So that was great. But we're gonna miss him quite a bit. And I just wanted to make sure that we recognized him and his service to the city. It's been fantastic having him here.
Yeah.
Friday.
Yep.
Done on Friday.
I know. Just walk me, see him walking around with a smile on his face. It's like, yeah.
You know, the.
Killing me.
Old Mayor Gary would say, where's the chocolate cake?
You're right.
Five layered chocolate cake.
Five layer.
Seven, seven layer. All right.
And that's all I have. Thanks.
All right. And this meeting is adjourned at six forty one P M.